I get over to the ACTC meeting last week and I'm walking up to the door and I think to myself, Pat's not gonna be here, I'm gonna have to run.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair of one. Oh, Caproot?
Yeah, that's why I opened the door. Police is, I can't see you, you're gonna, I'm gone. It was so weird, like.
Like a?
A voice, this total. Good. I'm good.
You want music?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Written about five new songs in the last three weeks. It's just. Fun.
Send me some. Oh, yeah, yeah, I liked that last, I loved the title.
Yeah.
I loved it.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our city council meeting on April 7th. We have a quorum with everyone in attendance. If you could please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to open the public forum. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes. In accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The city council may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may request staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to address the council on an item not on the agenda?
Please press the button.
Get a little closer.
You can pull it down, pull it down. You can pull it down, there you go.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Victoria. The little green light was on, but not the big one. She made the big one go on. I'm Gail Shifsky. I live at 120 Flume Road, and I think with all of the police force here, I think I'm bringing my first topic up first. Some time ago, in the last couple of years, it took us about a couple of years to finally get no parking signs on Greenstone Avenue. People park there all the time. My husband took a picture the other day, six cars were right underneath the signs. What it is, is weekends when they have baseball games, they fill our street. So they're still doing it even with the signs. After all our hard work to get those signs up, they're not being monitored by anybody. So this is very opportune to have all of you to talk, tell them, we need help on that street during baseball games. And when there's big events here, like duck race, we're probably not gonna be able to get down our road. So we really would appreciate if those signs could be enforced. Anyway, that's my major first topic. The second one is, I can't believe that Gold Rush is coming back. After working so hard on it for so many years to stop it, it's coming back. And I guess I'm concerned with the council's decision to support it because the issues are still there. We're gonna, you know, increase the population of the city by a thousand people. Where are you gonna put the cars? Where are they gonna go? Where's the services for all those people? I don't know if you've gotten that far in the process, but it's like, hopefully someone's thought is maybe opening up the process and then bring in the public to discuss this with you. Because it was a, you know, 900 houses was horrible, but 150 is still a lot of houses. You're gonna double the city's population. We will no longer be a small town. So that's a major change for all of us who lived here a long time. So I'm hoping that everyone, public participation and really do your homework on all the issues that are gonna be affected. Traffic, services, safety, road safety, all the things, environmental problems, all of that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Gail. Would anyone else care to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Okay.
Presentation before your report, Tom?
Um, I can be quick.
We're gonna go ahead and have the city managers report, Tom?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. Yeah, so the, on the Gold Rush, we held a pre-screening. It wasn't that the council supported or didn't support it. It is 150 homes, which, you know, the average is like two and a half people a homes. That would be up to 450 people in probably four years. It would take quite a while to build out those 150. Just, just so people understand. Um, just some quick updates. So these are arranged by our annual priorities. So in terms of roads, you know, we're starting to work on the draft budget for next year. Yep.
And largely the.
Yeah. Um, we have, we have, working with Martin Ryan, we have settled on a oversight committee for measure P, so that'll be part of the budget process. This picture, the first picture on the left is a side rock repair on Main Street. It was kind of a major tripping hazard at the far end of Hotel Sutter. Um, so that, that's been nicely redone. If you guys haven't seen it. Um, and we also had an issue with a storm drain at the end of Eureka Road in the parking lot that also got repaired. Um, in terms of the budget itself, um, tonight we're doing the long range financial forecast, which is kind of the start of working on the budget. Um, and we're continuing to work on our new financial software. Mason's been busy. We ran into one snag and that our current payroll company doesn't want to seem to give us our data to import. So luckily, we don't have that many employees, so we have to re-enter it weekend, but we're continuing to push on that. And then a lot of activity on the wastewater front. So we had the permitting team from the water board agency come and tour our facilities as well as the ARSA reservoirs and ARSA pipeline. And we've scheduled a meeting with that same group as well as the discharge folks to start to talk about what they, you know, any requirements they see on their end as we look at planning for a new wastewater plant. We've been talking to a lot of engineering, construction companies. We had two new ones come tour the plant since the last council meeting, and then we've been getting kind of, uh, uh, I don't know what I'd call them, initial assessments maybe from one company. We have a second company that's working on one. Doing a little bit of work to give us much better idea in terms of what it would cost and how they would approach it as a company.
Tom, can I ask you a question, Tom?
Yeah.
On that, on the wastewater or the waste board that when they were here, that team, I was just wondering, did they have anything interesting to say? Any observations, any comments that we might be interested in?
I think the only thing was that I think they're pretty supportive of us not being tied into this complicated ARSA system. So they seem supportive of us trying to discharge into the creek, but.
And then, now I had a question with the, do we have a general deadline where we'd like to cut off bids from other companies or in a map?
Yeah, well, we haven't issued the RFQ, so there'll be an RFQ issued with a time period. Um, so this is all kind of pre that, where we're
Okay.
explaining kind of our constraints. You know, the site's very constrained, so a lot of people want to come see what it looks like. And this, next to last point here is um, working with hydrosciences, looking at the FEMA maps. There was a map done, uh, can't remember the year, but it's quite a while ago, that has half of the wastewater plant underwater. But it didn't, it didn't really study the elevations, so we're trying to resolve whether it's gonna be a real issue or not. If we need to change those maps, it could be up to a year to get FEMA to correct those. There was very detailed elevations done to the bridge from Flushing Dam all the way down to the bridge that stopped right in front of the plant. And then it gets very vague. So that's a new issue that popped up last week. Um, and we are working on this RFQ, Julia, which would be the next step. Um, in terms of economic development, we did win a grant for entrepreneur center proposal. Unfortunately, we requested 350,000 and they awarded us 65,000. So we're trying to figure out if we're gonna accept it, what we could do with that money. We also have been looking at grants for hazard mitigation, potentially, there's funding available for generators that could power the police department and also power the wastewater plant. And then we are in the middle of a, a nexus study to, to update our impact fees. That's, that's moving along. I just wanted to let you know that we've been meeting every couple of weeks and so it will be coming to you guys eventually. It's not, not ready for prime time, but it's getting there.
Um, one, one quick question on that, on the floodplain issue that you raised that, that came up at the wastewater. I'm wondering, you indicated that at some point, if, if something were to happen, it could take a year to get maps updated.
Right.
So is that like worst case scenario in terms of what you've discovered, that the whole project could be delayed by a year?
Yeah, like we're trying to figure out if it's a real issue or not before we would even do it in an RFQ, because we would basically be on hold potentially.
And how do you get to that place where you know yes or no, it's a real issue?
Um, we're, we're looking to see what data is available. We may need to take elevation readings and see if the, if the wall of the plant is actually higher than what FEMA has. And so that's kind of the next step.
And if it's not, then it's a problem.
Then we need to plan to build a, a certified flood wall. We have a wall there, but it's, it's not certified.
Okay.
Potentially.
Thank you.
Um, and then just on day-to-day updates, so you have, we're gonna introduce you to, well, tell you about three new employees later today. We fixed that tripping hazard on Main Street. We're doing a bunch of park improvements, which you may have seen. A lot of these were planned as part of the budget, but we're trying to get them done before the duck race. So uh, you can see there's a new sidewalk, which is kind of more ADA accessible. And there's, uh, doing the sidewalk, we had to build this wall so that kids wouldn't, it's quite a drop there now into the playground. And then if you saw right outside the door here, we pulled out some bushes. There's quite a nice plaque and rock there that nobody, it's kind of hidden behind the bushes at the time, so. And then coming, we're gonna do, uh, this, this brown dirt area, it's gonna be filled in with gravel. And we're restating the picnic tables and things along the creek. So we are in event season, a lot of events coming fast and furious. I'm not gonna read all of these. Obviously, the duck race is a big one. It's gonna be about 20 nonprofits or 24, 30. So it's gonna be a great opportunity for nonprofits to, to raise money and to have some community fun. But it's pretty, pretty busy all the way, probably to about the 4th of July.
Claire, are ticket sales going well?
They are, uh, but we have 5,000 ducks, so you can always buy more.
And then in terms of your upcoming agendas, um, you know, you guys surpassed the wastewater rate increases. So we're not gonna, we're not asking you to approve those, but we're gonna be doing a noticing, just announcing it to kind of communicate, communicate to the community it's coming. You know, we're gonna be working on the budget. Also, delinquent sewer notices need to be approved by you this time of year. And then the wastewater treatment plant, RFQ. And that's it.
Council, any questions for Tom? Did the public have any questions for Tom before we move on? Okay. Thanks, Tom. We have a couple of presentations tonight. The first one is a proclamation for Mary Ann Solbrig, who retired from us last month, and she made an appearance tonight out of retirement. We have a resolution for her, but I'm gonna go ahead and read it. This is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Sutter Creek, recognizing Mary Ann Solbrig for her dedicated service and honoring her contributions and accomplishments on behalf of Sutter Creek. Whereas Mary Ann was hired as a part-time account clerk on July 6th, 2021. During the last four years, Mary Ann's job duties have taken many forms to satisfy the needs of City Hall, and she has performed them all in stride and with much success. She retired from Sutter Creek on February 27th, 2025. And whereas Mary Ann has been an integral piece of City Hall, upon her hire, there were significant shifts in job duties around City Hall. Many building and planning responsibilities were passed on to City Hall staff, and through that adaptation, Mary Ann pushed through and learned many different tasks around the office to help support her peers. And whereas Mary Ann is always eager to learn new tasks around the office, this aptitude for learning is a natural segue for cross-training with other City Hall staff, which has been an enormous help in times where staff are absent or overwhelmed with other tasks. She's always been a reliable part of our team, willing to help when needed. And whereas Mary Ann's attention to detail and proficiency at her regular duties make her a very efficient, accurate account clerk. The number of tasks she is able to get through as a part-time worker is nothing short of impressive. She is leaving behind a legacy of great work. She is honest when a mistake is made and is always willing to do what is necessary to rectify the issue. She's a self-sufficient worker who does not need to be reminded of deadlines or jobs that need to be completed. It is a breeze to work with her. And whereas Mary Ann is always a friendly face to the public when she helps at the counter and everyone she encounters has a pleasant experience in City Hall. Her customer service skills on the phone and in the, and at the counter are effortless, and she's always willing to do whatever she can to assist citizens with their requests and need. And whereas Mary Ann's tenure at Sutter Creek has garnered her admiration from staff and the citizens of the city, and she has upheld the high quality of service that we tirelessly try to maintain year after year. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Claire Gunzleman, on behalf of the city council, citizens and employees of the city of Sutter Creek, do hereby issue this proclamation to Mary Ann Solbrig and her unwavering dedication to the city of Sutter Creek. Mary Ann will be deeply missed by her coworkers, council and the public. However, we are very excited for her to have the time to spend more time enjoying her hobbies and being with her loving family. Mary Ann, we have this for you if we can hand it to you. And another one.
Before you move on, if I could just say, I really appreciated Mary Ann's positive attitude. She was a real joy to work with, so thank you. And she loves.
And she loves retirement because she's out of here.
Good for her.
Okay, I have another proclamation for Ryan Baldwin. I'm gonna go ahead and read it. This is a proclamation of the city council of Sutter Creek, recognizing police officer Ryan Baldwin and honoring his many accomplishments on behalf of the city of Sutter Creek. Whereas, police officer Ryan Baldwin was appointed on July 5th, 2021, and entered the field training program, which he completed successfully and became a certified solo patrol officer. Whereas, Ryan has distinguished himself from the start of his tenure with Sutter Creek as a competent collaborative officer, willing to assist his fellow officers and to serve the community at an exemplary level. And whereas, serving in the role of a police officer with the Sutter Creek Police Department, much of his time as the only officer on duty at the time, Ryan was proactive and persistent, leading to numerous successful arrests, making a significant impact on public safety and the overall well-being of the Sutter Creek community. And whereas, Ryan's outstanding service to Sutter Creek was recognized by the Masonic Lodge in an award ceremony along with other public safety, safety professionals across Amador County. And whereas, early in his time with Sutter Creek, while serving as the only officer on duty at the time, Ryan was the lead investigator on a fatal vehicle accident in which a teenage bicyclist was killed. Ryan was integral in every aspect of the investigation, which resulted in an arrest and the person responsible being sentenced to state prison. And whereas, Ryan distinguished himself through hard work and competence and was selected to serve as a field training officer, responsible for the training and orientation of new Sutter Creek police officers. And whereas, Officer Ryan Baldwin has dedicated himself to the service and safety of the citizens of Sutter Creek with unwavering commitment, integrity and professionalism. And whereas, Ryan participated each year in the Shop With a Cop event, partnering the youth of our community with police officers during the holiday season. Ryan regularly volunteered additional time to help coordinate the logistics of the event and ensure the event went as seamlessly as possible. And now therefore, I, Mayor Claire Gunzleman, on behalf of the city council, citizens and employees of the city of Sutter Creek, do hereby issue this proclamation to Ryan Baldwin in recognition of his many contributions. Now therefore be it resolved, we extend our gratitude and appreciation to Ryan for nearly four years of exemplary service as a Sutter Creek police officer. Ryan will be missed here at the city of Sutter Creek, and as the Amador County native moves on to other professional challenges, we congratulate Ryan for a job well done and wish him continued success and happiness. I imagine the chief would like to say something? Okay.
Sorry, chief, can you use the microphone, please?
Thank you. Um, it's always bittersweet when we lose an employee to another organization. But people grow. They move on to other places where they can do different things that simply aren't offered here. And that was the case with Ryan. Um, he has different challenges with his new employer. Um, I know he's gonna be wildly successful, just as he was here. Um, he's a dedicated employee, dedicated man. He's a resident from here, went to school here, knows everybody here. He's like the ideal person we want in our police department. And as he moves on to something else, um, he's the ideal person I want representing our agency, our city, is what Sutter Creek and Amador County is all about. Ryan, thank you for all those shifts. You worked alone, by yourself, um, all the collaboration you did with the, the folks next to you, um, all the work you did with the other agencies here. It hasn't gone unnoticed, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm not one for speeches, uh, no pressure here, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, Tom, the, all of the council. It's been an honor to work here in the, in the city, uh, that, that I grew up in, you know, growing up here in a small town. It's, it's nice to make a difference. So, um, for everybody that has coached me up, Sergeant Brewer, Rego, McEwen, learned everything from that guy. Yeah, but Chief O'Connell, I mean, it's, it's, it's an honor. So I appreciate it and, and we'll see you around. I'm not leaving the county, but I, I was, it's a, a true honor. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Another photo, watching, photo?
We'll take a brief recess for a picture.
Since you're all here, thank you to all you officers for the job you do, and Ryan especially, for the work that you've done for us. Really appreciate it. And it's a tough job, and you did it well. Thank you.
Congratulations and best of luck. Okay, we're going to move on to item C. We're going to introduce some new staff members, Tom.
Yeah, actually, Jen, do you want to go first?
So, thank you all again. I think it's important how we say goodbye to people and how we say hello to them. So as we just did this with Ryan, I think it's important that we bring our new folks before you so you get to know the folks that are serving you in our community very well. We're very lucky to have Phillip Wosner join us. Come up here and join us. Join me. And his wife Michaela is there with their beautiful little baby. He's here with his family to enjoy this moment. Phillip's going to be our newest reserve police officer. Over time, I'm hoping that he'll be able to fill shifts, cover vacancies, and supplement the staff we have, so it's a great addition. He comes with a stellar, stellar record. He started his career with the Placerville Police Department. During our background investigation done by Officer McEwen back there, we spoke with a number of employees there, one of whom used to work here, Aaron Pratt, and spoke extremely high about Phillip and his work ethic, his aggressive, strong work. So we're going to be lucky to have him. Also during this process, we spoke with Sheriff Redmond. He used to work for the Sheriff's Department as well. And Sheriff Redmond spoke very highly of him and offered him a job back immediately if he wanted it. So I told Gary, "Thank you, but no, he's going to stay with us." Presently, he works for the Shingle Springs Tribal Police Department and is well, well-liked in his agency there. He does investigations there. I think there's word on the street he may get a dog here very soon. Right? So he's doing really good things there, and I expect really good things from him here as well. He's going to be a great addition to our team. Normally, we do a badge pinning, and we do it by the person that means the most to him, which is never me, is usually the wife. Uniform stores are problematic, and his uniforms just showed up today, so he hasn't had a chance to try them on and look all spiffy. But I do want to present my badge to his wife to give to him so that it's given to him by the person that means the most, so.
Pick up that baby.
Yes.
She might have something to say.
All right. So normally, you'd pin this on him, but your hands are full, so I'm going to give you this to give to him.
One, two, three, four.
Thank you very much. We normally do an oath of office, so we can do that now or we can do it later, however, Aaron, you'd like to do it? If you read it, you can't go wrong.
Thanks, sir.
All right, maybe I'll let you read into there.
We'll stand.
All right, I'm going to read it.
Okay.
I.
I.
Phillip.
Phillip Wosner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
The purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. I didn't prepare a speech, but I'm just grateful. I worked with this team, most of the officers before. It's a great team under a good leadership, and that's why I chose this place. I've worked with a lot of agencies and communities, and I love the small-town atmosphere. Love being able to know people and have that relationship with them. So I'm just grateful to start and ready to work. Thank you.
This is my wife, McRae Barrett.
Got it, Julia. There we go. All right, here we go again. One, two, three. You guys are tired of counting right now, aren't you? Okay, we got it. We got it. It's good.
Tom, we have some other new staff to introduce.
Yeah, we do. So we'll give them a second. Yeah, so every employee that works for the city or state is sworn in and takes that oath. So we had three other employees start. They took their oaths when they started. Brooke Winchell's our new account clerk, placing Mary Ann. She's part-time. She didn't work today, so she's not here tonight. But if you guys come by the front office and say hi, she's here Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So she'll be handling accounts payable, accounts receivable, or wastewater billing. She is the account clerk for the county fair. So she lives in Plymouth. She also runs accounting for her family contracting business, and so she seemed to have a really good accounting background, and we're excited to have her join. The other new face you'll see in City Hall is Will Watson. He is our project manager, so it's program, but project manager. His responsibility is he's really focusing on our grant applications, grant administration, taking on a lot of tasks that Jody used to do, but it's not kind of, not really one-to-one. Kind of shifted some things around. He's also helping out with the wastewater treatment plant project, which, if we start doing that, it's going to be a lot of coordination. We also have several other projects, efficiency projects in the city that he's going to help oversee. He's also going to take on the risk management, which is the city's insurance, and city-sponsored events. So he's a former Marine. He was also a police officer. He spent most of his career working in solar companies, kind of large-scale solar. And most recently, he was at the California Office for Emergency Services, which administers the FEMA grants. So he's helping us right now kind of collect the remaining FEMA money that's outstanding. And then our third new face is Aaron, whom I think many of you have met. Aaron Wolcott is our new city clerk. He's going to be responsible for public meetings, just with you guys, but with our boards and commissions, public record requests, HR, our website, and communications. And Aaron's background, he's worked for a number of years with nonprofits in Africa, providing humanitarian aid. Actually, grew up in Africa. He lives in Pine Grove, and he's experienced in management, HR, operations. And you also may have seen him as a reporter here, so he's a strong writing background, communications background. So just wanted to let you guys know who some of these people are. Hope everybody come by and say hi in the office, so.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to say who. Want your picture too?
Okay, item six is the approval of the minutes from the March 17 meeting.
Yes.
But we're about to approve the minutes.
Who's going to do crowd control?
Okay, funny, guys. Are there any edits or comments on the minutes or a motion to approve?
I move we approve the minutes from March 17.
Second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consent agenda, the updated pool management agreement. Tom, consent, so I can hear a motion to approve unless anybody wants to pull it from consent.
I'd go ahead and move to approve the new contract.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There are no public hearings or administrative agenda. We'll start with the two-thirds year budget update.
Yes, you probably noticed there's no Mason tonight. Mason is sick. He wanted to be here, but I told him to go home, so he's actually listening online. I think I can answer your questions. So we don't have a presentation on the mid-year. Mid-year, it's two-thirds of the year through, but you know, you guys can all read the report. In terms of revenue, we're generally on budget. We have a little bit of concern about sales tax. It's kind of hard to forecast, and it also lags by a quarter. But the county is forecasting that their sales tax is going to come in about 5% short. We do see ours behind, though we saw a couple of good months recently. So we're anticipating it may come in a little bit short. Property taxes, we think are going to be on target. Generally, they've come in a little high. And that's kind of the picture on the revenue side. You know, there were a couple of issues with, I think we just made a mistake in the budget on the COPS grant where it was budgeted. It's been pretty flat year-to-year, but the amount we had in the budget was about $50,000 high.
Okay.
There are other areas you see when we get to the expenses where we've saved money. So we do plan to bring some budget amendments to you guys to kind of true things up. We're going to be on budget.
Tom?
Yep.
The sales tax, when we did last year's budget, what increase did we budget for?
I think it was pretty small, like 2%, or something. Generally, you know, sales tax has been pretty steady, kind of slowly going up. And then, you know, again, on the recovery fees, you know, those, we basically charge for work done, so kind of broke those out as its own category instead of calling it revenue. We just called it fee recovery. We're pretty busy in terms of building permits and everything, and you know, we're just keeping an eye that we're covering the costs we incur with external consultants. You know, on the expense side, if you guys had any questions, we had a couple of positions that were open for a while. That did save the city some money. You know, when the clerk left, she did cash out all of her vacation, so that was a larger hit. So it wasn't like we saved 100% when she wasn't here, but there was kind of a net savings. Same thing with Jody, so. We also paid Calpers upfront this year, which saved us about $10,000. You have an option of paying quarterly or upfront.
That seemed like a good idea.
Yeah, I think we'll continue to do that.
Yeah.
Planning's on track. And just trying to think, I mean, kind of the big one. We did budget for insurance. It's a concern kind of going forward that continues to go up. And then utilities are coming in kind of above budget. So we've been also watching kind of the capital projects, so. You know, we had the issue where we expected to get more from ACTC on those street projects. So we've just held back on other street projects to kind of make that part of the budget balance. And so, you know, I think the conclusion is we feel like we can manage to this budget. We do want to shift some money between some pools to kind of make things balance out. So we plan to bring some budget amendments to you guys to make that clear.
I just had two things I was going to ask Mason, Tom, and I'm not sure you can answer them or not. One of them had to do with the new waste service company and that the inconsistent payment, right? And he says, you know, is this intentional or unintentional, or something like that? And I'm wondering, well, what does that mean and what are the implications?
Yeah.
And what's going on there?
So we're calling them to get an explanation. We haven't gotten it yet.
Okay.
Under ACES, it was consistent month-to-month, which is, I think, what it should be.
Yeah.
So we're going to get to the bottom of that one.
Okay, so you'll follow up. The other one I had was on the PG&E expense, and I noted that the PG&E budget was based on that AT&amp;T thing, and so it was flawed, of course. And then, but then his solution, I wasn't sure I understood how the proposed solution was going to solve that problem. I'm trying to look at my note here as I'm talking. Now our process of receiving reimbursement from AT&amp;T is to invoice them quarterly, and they send payment for the power usage of their antenna. We'll be presenting a budget amendment. So how does that quarterly accounting of it solve the problem overall for the year?
It doesn't. It solves it going forward, that we won't do this again.
But how does it get extracted from the PG&E budget so that we're not making the same mistake again next year?
Right, so we're going to budget based on our power usage for PG&E.
Okay.
And again, we're going to do a budget amendment. We have other funds that we haven't spent to cover the higher utility bills in this budget. And then next year, we're going to be careful and keep the franchise fee separate so that we don't kind of mix those numbers. Be careful and keep the franchise fee separate, so that we don't kind of mix those numbers.
Thank you.
I I had a question, Tom, and but maybe skipping forward to the. The actual budget report, but a question about the fees, variance and conditional. It's almost twenty one thousand dollars over budget. So.
Which category is that?
Under fees, variance and conditional. It's a very.
So those are project fees, so. That's money coming in.
So we have that much of a shortfall.
No, it's money coming in, yeah.
Let me make sure I'm looking at the same.
So it's on page twenty seven. So that's why I might be. Looking ahead. About halfway down in the general fund.
Are you in the revenue sheet or the expense sheet?
Under the revenue.
Yeah, so that's just saying that we've had more people apply for business permits. Or building permits, variances. So that's revenue that's come into the city. And that pays the consulting fees for engineering. Some some internal staff and for our planner.
I brought this up before, I I don't, I think it's confusing to. Consider. Fees for permits and as revenue because.
Yeah.
They. They're there to cover the cost of the process.
Yeah.
Of that, not really.
Yes, when somebody does a project, they they have to put a deposit down and we track time against that. And if there's money left, we refund it to them.
Right, so it's it's really just a break even type of.
It's yeah, it's fee recovery. We show it, there is a revenue side and an expense side, but that's why in the report. We didn't, we broke it out into fee recovery as opposed to revenue.
So then, just so I can understand. Where it says fees variance conditional, the budget is a thousand dollars. Year to date actuals is twenty one, six, twenty one thousand, six hundred and some. Which leaves a budget deficit of that same amount, it's on page. Twenty seven in the packet.
It's a negative revenue, which means we made more money than we expected. I know, it's a little confusing, but we've.
And he, Jim did bring that up a couple. Meetings ago and looks like Mason did address that here. In the staff report under fee recovery, that it's all meant to be a net zero thing, but it has to be accounted for in the revenue because it's money that hits the bank.
This isn't a bad thing, this is that it was a lot more activity than we forecasted.
So I think the confusing part for me is it's still described as the remaining budget as a deficit.
It's in the income category, so it's more money.
Yeah, it's kind of counterintuitive because it's a deficit for that the money came in, so it's like switched.
So that's the confusing part on reading that versus. Do you see where I'm at? Where I'm.
Yeah, I do, and again, we are actually.
So that's a surplus, not a deficit.
Correct. But it's not really a surplus, as Jim says, because on the expense side, there will be a corresponding expense.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we thought a thousand dollars was gonna come in, actually twenty thousand dollars came in.
Correct.
Okay.
Did the public have any questions on the three quarters report? Two thirds report?
I had one more quick one.
Oh, sorry.
And I don't know if. When we. When we got the TUT tax. Approved through measure P. Derek, I think at one time we were talking about the cost of administering that, and we didn't really know at that point. And I think you were gonna kind of go away and come back and let us know, how much is that, did you have a chance to do that yet? Because I'm still very curious about what the state of California charges us to administer the TUT in the ongoing.
Sorry, say that again?
The TUT administration fees from the state of California, it was an unknown several months ago when we met here.
Yeah, they had like a not to exceed mound in the agreement, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did clarify that, I'm trying to remember, Derek, do you remember?
I don't remember the clarification, so.
Yeah. I remember it was a positive answer, it was like a maximum amount, but they expected it to be much less, but I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, they it was, it was based on some, we have that information somewhere, I know we do.
Okay. If somebody could send that along, I'd appreciate having a look at that at some point.
And then. I did wanna, before we get much further in the budget process. If we could go back through notes or last year's budget formation and see. What our thoughts were when setting the sales tax budget, because I feel like. There were a few years that we were expecting it to go up by four percent or so, and you know, we're off that, and I think this would be a good year to.
Reset.
To reset and be pretty conservative, because I'm not sure. What the economy is gonna look like. Anything else? Public? We have a public here. Okay. Then we will move on to the long range financial forecast.
Yes, this is kind of a continuation of our budget discussion. So last year, if you remember, we did a five year forecast, this is an updated that long range financial forecast. You know, we basically. We've kept, we kept two years ago, we kept the last year, which is currently the audit that's in process, current budget, and then four years forward. You know, you'll, we'll see as we go through this, we're gonna talk about updated assumptions. What the forecast looks like, what the pension costs look like and kind of next steps. So we're doing this to really, it's important to understand that this is a baseline forecast of just the general fund. Doesn't have wastewater, doesn't have streets, any any of the kind of enterprise funds. Those are separate categories, several of those like wastewater are dedicated funds. This is kind of like, what is the core operating cost of the city in terms of revenue and expense? So really think of it as the baseline. You know, the really significant cost drivers are. Wages, I mean, the biggest expense for the city is are the people that work here. So it's wages, pensions and benefits. The the other large expense that's really hard to budget for are the county services, and we've seen. You know, kind of dramatic increases there in terms of a percentage increase. And then insurance has been going up quite a bit. So, you know, we did, we did look at, you know, to your comment about how do we forecast like future revenue and expense, you know, we did take a look at the midyear. I think we're trying to be fairly conservative in our assumptions. We also, in terms of the forecast, you know, again, we had a portion of the year this year where we were understaffed, you know, the assumption going forward was current staffing, but fully staffed. And then, you know. Trying to look at kind of ongoing expenses as opposed to one time events. So these are the key assumptions that drive the model, so on the revenue side. Most, most of our revenue is growing kind of two to three percent a year. Property tax, sales tax. Is still about two percent. And that the challenge is that on the expense side, we have several expenses that are growing faster than two percent. You know, last year we saw, I think it was a fourteen percent increase in benefit costs, we assumed ten percent for next year. Insurance had a big jump. County services actually went up by more, but we assumed about ten percent. And then Calpers costs about a ten percent annual cost increase.
The two percent salary increase that you have there? Is that? The COLA or in addition to the COLA?
It's, it's really kind of a placeholder because we we negotiate in in closed session. And and so we don't, we don't model here what we really expect it to be, but I would say two percent's on the low side.
And then that's for our represented employees, but. Is there something similar pass on to our unrepresented employees?
Pretty much everybody.
Is the ten percent Calpers? That seems to. Increase annually. To recent. Cost estimates. Is there any prediction or any feeling that that actually could go up?
So Calpers gives us these annual, they're actuarial kind of tables based on how long they think people are gonna live. And they analyze it for. Our pool, so it's, you know, custom for us. That's what this forecast is based on. So it's. Every year we get kind of their forecast or just including it.
Has that been fairly accurate to use in the past, what they predict and what? We actually end up having to pay? The increase?
It, well, it can vary based on their investment returns, so each. Each year, take, there's kind of like multiple thirty year timelines, so. They take their investment return in a year and then they do a forecast. For that. Contribution to somebody's pension for the next thirty years. And then the next year, depending on where their returns are, it's like another. Forecast, so it it's pretty complicated. Math. And that the thing, that's where the unfunded liability comes in, when their investment returns are below their target. They just send everybody a bill to make up the difference.
And that's what I'm kind of forecasting, just looking, I mean, no one can predict obviously what the market's gonna do, but if it continues anywhere, what it's been doing, alas.
Could you bring up that bar graph that?
Yeah, I mean, we'll get there, you want to go there right now?
Well, we seem to be on that topic, but.
It just seems to me ten percent with the volatility in the market right now is is gonna be low.
Yep.
And that we should be forecasting.
It's kind of like this blended thirty year average, is what I was trying to say, kind of think of it like a mortgage and maybe mortgage rates. So it it does go up and down, but it gets smoothed over thirty years, if you want to think of it that way.
What what strikes me in looking at that bar graph is. The purple line is pretty flat. But the unfunded portion, the. Light blue line above. Goes up every year. And it just seems like this system is broken. When it's some, we're kicking the can down the road, we have these unfunded liabilities. What happens when their? When the liabilities come due?
Right.
I.
They're.
I just don't know.
I mean, Calpers calls them unfunded, but they fund them through the cities, through these bills they send us, so.
Right.
You know, one, that really the chart is this chart, this is their investment return. Their assumption used to be that they would make seven percent return every year. And, you know, that was very high and they didn't do it, they've been bringing that down, so I think the more they bring. Now their rate is six point eight percent, so they've been gradually lowering it. So the closer they get to actually hitting their investment return, the unfunded liability will go to zero.
But but no matter what their return is. The benefits are are fixed. Are defined, I think is the term they use, they're defined benefits. And. The taxpayer has to make up the difference, and I just, what can we do to fight back to?
I mean, we're.
Fix the system.
I mean, the only thing that I know is you can try to buy your way out of Calpers, and that's very expensive, some cities have done it. I mean, this chart, you know, they have, they have like a few years ago, they had a twenty one percent return. That helps a lot, they they took those extra returns. Kept the money and applied it to these years where they were behind.
Try to level it out, but.
Yeah.
Just the same, right?
Well, and to Julia's point, I think. What kind of a difference does it make in terms of what we budget, so for instance, if we budget the ten percent? Do we have less chance? Of improving our situation than if we were to budget twenty percent?
Well, that's where the. The one fifteen trust comes in, I mean, Calpers tells us. Through these, this actuarial forecast, what what they think they're gonna bill us, and it's been fairly accurate, so if we budget for that. We should be good.
That's, that's the fact that it's fairly accurate over the years?
If you wanted to pay more, we would put it into this one fifteen trust, which the city owns and controls.
Okay.
And we can invest more aggressively than our operating capital.
Okay.
And then we would have extra funds, so if we did get hit in a really bad year with an unexpected large bill.
Right.
You could decide to pull out of the of the savings fund.
There there is risk involved, though, you know.
In that fund?
In the one fifteen fund? Yeah, sure, and just. You're exposed to the market.
Right.
There are, however, they do have, you can. Enter into it at different. Specify just different risk levels that you're willing to.
Right.
Accept, but.
Yeah.
There are still.
We already invest the city's funds in a very conservative portfolio.
Yeah.
So the only reason really to have a one fifteen is to be slightly more aggressive.
Right.
Kind of moderate. And it's really, I think, a function of how long you expect to keep the money there. So. Anyways, that's, that's a good discussion, I think. I think, you know, the other things that we're kind of highlighting here is. You know, just in the macroeconomic environment, inflation, what's inflation gonna do? Markets are very chaotic right now, and it's not clear, you know. What's gonna happen in terms of the trade war and tariffs? And and again, whatever your politics, it's really about the monetary policy and how that's gonna hit the city. We did assume basically kind of status quo with slow growth. We didn't model a recession, so a recession's possible. You could see, you know, generally, we've had one every six and a half years. We had kind of this artificial COVID spike, it went down and then back up. So I guess our recommendation as staff is that we would go with this baseline, which is kind of status quo. But that we need to be ready to kind of react quickly if we don't see revenues materializing. And it's probably a good year to really. Do like a real solid midyear budget check in and. You know, I will be monitoring expenses and and, you know, not getting ahead of ourselves. This is a. Really useful chart, and again, this is just one scenario, this is the set of assumptions we talked about, it's very sensitive. You know, we're basically. At break even in terms of expenses and revenue. The black line is. The. Smaller dollar amount on the left, I guess, in terms of. It's basically what we could add to reserves each year, so. It's, it's. Goes up and down a little bit. You know, but it's generally going down. And that's kind of reflecting, I think, the different rates of growth of revenue versus expenses. And again, this is a five year forecast, so, you know, when we get five years out, we can. Really, you know, when we do our budget, we're gonna look at next year. And, you know, you gotta take a forecast for what it is, it's a directional tool. We should be able to manage within our budget so that when we get out five years, hopefully to look better than this, but. I just kind of really wanted to highlight. And I know it's probably not news to you guys, but you know, our budget is pretty tight. And then this. This is. You know, I don't want to be all doom and gloom. We we do have reserves, we have, you know, operating reserves. This is our total, total amount of reserves over the years and at the percentage as part of the general fund. That's not to say that this money is not allocated, it is allocated, right? Or unassigned. But we are kind of. But um, we are kind of maintaining, I think, a pretty healthy operating reserve um, to deal, deal with emergencies.
I think the key, and you you hit on it just a few minutes ago, is you have to react quickly because it can uh, snowball fast.
Right. Right. And I think it's kind of time to be on high alert, just given the market environment. So a a couple of things on these pension slides. So so again, as Jim pointed out, the the purple is the normal cost. That is the payroll contribution. There's a fixed percentage. The city pays and the employee pays. And the blue is the, the part that CalPERS didn't make in their investments and i- is the unfunded piece. And that's, that's the big piece. I think the more, this is even more interesting and that um, you know, we have, if you were, if you're an older employee and you started under that, what's called the classic plan, um, you can retire earlier. It paid out a lot better. Um, most of the city employees are on what's called PEPRA, which is kind of the newer plan. And so, you know, the normal cost, it's about fifty fifty between classic and PEPRA. The unfunded liability, the dark, the the dark green is the people that are on the classic plan. So that's only a handful of current employees and it's, you know, a bunch of uh, past employees. It's probably mostly past employees. And then the new, the current employees that are on PEPRA, which are younger folks, newer employees, is the like, like little bar, a little sliver. So, you know.
When, when we're looking at that, the the uh classic, the dark green, let's just take uh twenty twenty five, twenty six, it says three hundred eighty five thousand. Is it guaranteed that that is, it says unfunded liability? At some point in time, will we be responsible for three hundred eighty five thousand dollars? Or is there a scenario where say, heaven forbid that a a former employee passes away, then does this unfunded liability assume that they're gonna live ten years, but they only live five years? How does that work?
I mean, I think pretty high confidence, our actual costs for next year will be three hundred eighty five thousand. And when you go further out, that's where it gets fuzzier.
Our actual liability, not actual cost, it's not.
No, the amount we will pay CalPERS next year.
Next year. Okay, that is next year's.
I mean, okay, when I say we, par- par- partial, part of the blues will be paid out of employee payroll.
Mm hmm.
The employee will pay a portion of it, but most of it's paid by the city.
So another's possible partial solution is for more, a higher contribution from, from the employees.
Yep. And the thing we really want to see is this curve starting to trend down. Now, basically, say you're you're paying off your mortgage. And again, I don't think you should expect to drive this down rapidly, but if you see it coming down and you know that twenty, twenty five years, it's gonna go to zero, then you can feel pretty good. Um, and what's good, I think, is it's pretty flat. I mean, I've seen curves that are going like this and it's like the entire general fund is gonna be consumed by that, you know, at some point. So we're not, we're not in that situation. Um, so we we kind of jumped ahead to this slide, but again, CalPERS investment returns are all over the place, year to year. Um.
I I have a question about that. Do you know what percent of that is the police salaries?
Uh, public safety on like this one?
Yeah.
Um, I don't offhand. I think it's probably in terms, it's probably roughly half between public works and police in terms of the dark green. Yeah, so so again, I just wanted to start our kind of budget planning process. I think, again, recognizing kind of the current, current environment. Um, we are, we are looking at a lot of grants right now. Um, typically grants are more for capital though than than operating. Um, you know, again, we we should have a more detailed discussion in the future about this one fifteen trust. We don't have a ton of money to invest, but if we could talk about policies where maybe we suck a little bit away every year. You know, it's the power of compounding. You'll, you'll be happy to do it. You know, we could talk about policies like maybe we take half of any excess we have in a a year and put that into the trust or I think if you have some kind of policy, it'll make it easier to develop the habit.
Is it, is it possible to forecast, though? Let's say we use that model that you just described, put put half away. Is that really going to be helpful or productive, produ- producing, you know, the funds that can be used? Or is it just to said something?
Yeah, it'll build up over time. Um, it, rather than giving it to CalPERS, the city you know, maintains ownership of it and you guys can decide when to spend it, when not to. Um, and there are certain conditions where you can actually pull the funds out. Um, but I mean, they're they're meant to go for, for the pension liability. It's just say, say there was a year when CalPERS had a really unexpectedly bad performance and we got a really large um, unfunded liability bill, then we could decide to pull money out of that fund to to help smooth that over.
And that the second question I had regarding um, grants for um, capital and equipment needs, that would probably ask of us to go back and maybe reprioritize our capital plan, capital or CIP projects.
Yeah.
Through those that are more affordable.
Yeah, I think we, I think we tried to say that, that we'd be opportunistic. If we got a grant uh, for something, then we pursue that. And again, it has to make sense that how much does the match and how much administrative overhead is there? Um, you know, I said, the big ones, insurance, um, I think Mason had some comments there about the insurance pool we're in. We do think we're in a really good pool. Um, we don't, we don't make a lot of insurance claims. We're all trying to keep those costs down. Um, we are scheduling conversation with them to see if we can adjust be some of our coverages to see if we can keep more control on that. CalPERS, we talked about a lot. The county services, you know, again, um, it's dispatch and animal control. And um, you know, I've been talking to Jim, I think think if uh, if there was some way, maybe we could do some multi-year agreements, just so we can know what the expectations are gonna be. Um, it's just every year, uh, we can't get surprised with a huge jump. Um, you know, animal control this year, we had a cap. I think that cap was, was really important. So we we know the worst case.
Right.
But, you know, these are costs are kind of out of our control. Um, Yep, so, you know, we're looking kind of for feedback and discussion from you guys tonight. Um, we're incorporating that into kind of our baseline for, for next year's budget. Um, you know, I guess one thing we hadn't talked about is, I think it was in the staff report. You know, we have a California, we have a cafeteria benefits plan for employees. So in one sense, the city is capped on what it pays for benefits. But as benefit costs continue to go up, you know, employees will have to pay from their own paycheck to cover basic benefits. So at some point, it's really, it's not sustainable. You know, if we we are, we're, our salaries tend to be below market. And then if we're actually not covering the cost of benefits, we have to raise the cafeteria amount. Um, so it's, you know, we can kind of manage it a little bit, but at the end of the day, it's kind of, it's kind of what the market is. Um, and again, I think we'll we'll get this, this base budget we're gonna bring to you guys is gonna be um, any, any kind of investments or programs that we'd suggest, we'll have to have a cut somewhere else to kind of make it balance out. So you guys asked questions, but if you have more questions or you just want to have a discussion.
Thanks a lot, Tom.
A lot to digest right now.
Um, I wanted to bring up one thing, uh, and I think this is the right time as we're going into the budget. We identified during our priority setting um, under the development of a sustainable budget, that we need to do a complete, you know, thorough study of the police budget. Uh, going into this budget, I think it's the time to do it. It's just a due diligence exercise because it's a huge portion of our general fund. Uh, and that way, you know, rather than just reacting to the constant increase in costs, we can be proactive and make sure that, you know, we're directing our spending to achieve what we want to with our public safety, you know, as cost effectively as possible. So I talked to Tom a little bit and I think the most efficient and transparent way to do that is um, to form a ad hoc finance committee focused on the police budget. So I wanted to do that tonight and I was hoping to appoint Dan and Jim to work alongside Chief O'Connell and the staff um, to just do a deep dive and see where we are and report back to council. I'm not sure how much of what you guys discover will affect this budget, but it could certainly, you know, we can't make good decisions without data. So Dan and Jim, would you be willing to do that?
Dan, you go first.
Um, you know, I'm happy to do that. I I think for myself, when I joined y'all a year and a half ago or whatever, it was a question in my mind and I don't know the answer to it today. Is what we're paying and how much we're paying, you know, reasonable for what we're expecting? Is what we're expecting reasonably representing what the community is saying they want? All those kind of things that we could just discover. So I look at it as an opportunity to just discover what's the deal? You know, are we, are we good? Are we the same as a lot of other communities our size? Are we more? Are we less? So my energy around it isn't to absolutely change what's going on. It's to do due diligence so we understand the value of the dollars we're spending and to make sure that they're being spent in the most uh you know, beneficial way possible. So I'd be happy to, you know, join in that deal and work with them.
I should have added, uh, because it's an ad hoc committee, the um, with two council people, the meetings would be noticed and open to the public. So I'm hope and would think we'd get a lot of public input too.
Yeah, I think that would be essential.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's a great idea. And also, Dan, what you're saying, I think it would be a good way to start like kind of from further out than just, obviously the details of the budget are fundamental to understand and look at, um, but if we can look at to um, I think that we should get a bid or an estimate from the county, what it would cost to have a sheriff for enforcement. And and I'm not on either side. I'm just think that in order to we should just like your St. Clair gather data and and what level of service they be able to provide us with. Um, and then mm, look as well at what really our officers are doing on a daily basis and how much risk we would be taking on if we didn't have the level of enforcement that we do right now. Because it is such a huge part. And if we reach a budget shortfall and also we're gonna, we, it looks to me like we'll continue letting these other projects dwindle because we're so focused here. So and just have a big, the bigger understanding and then the specifics would be great.
I, I agree with Susan. Thank you for bringing that up because I made note of being willing to explore um a variety might not be the right word, but multiple options to make sure that our public safety is secure. Um, in balancing out our budget versus what our community needs and asks for. Um, but with the financial commitments that are in, that that could be involved in that. So, yeah, I would like to see exploration into not just how do we fund what we have, but are there other options in being able to provide safety to our community um, beyond what we have now?
Let me ask you, you all a question about that because I've been thinking a lot about it. And part of me was thinking, you know, I might want to do it a step at a time in terms of trying to figure out, is our spend, I mean, it's high. There's no getting around that. It's a lot of money and it's a problem. But if we do a real apples to apples comparison and learn that we're doing better than most cities or we're doing as well or whatever, does it make sense to open an RFQ process or something like that with the sheriff's department or whatever, straight ahead without, see, my question is, people come to me and they say, well, it's too much or it's this or that. I just don't know. Is it too much? It, so I was thinking, you know, let's really quantify what the current state is. But, you know, and we don't have to decide this tonight, but I'm interested in your feedback and your thoughts about that. Do you think we ought to just go do that regardless of anything else or step it in a little bit?
Th- this subject has come up many, several times since I've been on the council. And in formal discussions with the sheriff's office and informal discussions that I've had with the current sheriff, that uh, if they were, this, the sheriff couldn't could not give us the same level of service at the cost that we have now. It'd be more expensive for the same level of service if it was provided by the sheriff's office.
Right.
Because his officers are paid more. So they just do the math.
Right.
For the same level of service, it's gonna, would, it would cost more. So you you could look at, like you said, is the level of service what we need or is, or could it be less? That's another, I think, a more important question.
Absolutely.
And because if you want the same level of service as we currently have, we could not contract, I've been told, with the sheriff's office for less. It would be more.
I think to answer what you're specifically asking, Dan, is it too soon? I think it is too soon. I I think, I think that's jumping the gun. I think we need to see what we have and part of seeing what we have is assuring that that's actually what we need and actually what we want.
I agree.
And, you know, when we, when we go through this process, we could, we can look at a menu and
Uh, yes, absolutely.
You know, proactively decide where we want our funding to go with public safety rather than just responding year after year after year to pay more for the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, so I I wouldn't think, because Jim's absolutely right. Yeah, same thing by somebody. Well, I don't know. We just went through that whole hers thing. Maybe it would cost less, but I I think that's jumping the gun.
So I could jump in. I mean, so, so the mayor did talk to me about this and I talked to the police chief. And again, I I think, I think kind of where you guys are going is right. The way, the way I'm thinking about it is there's benchmarking kind of ourselves on the finance, financial side, kind of purely almost a financial exercise. Um, and talking to Jim, you know, it's not like we have two or three officers on duty and we could go down to two of, you know, from three to two.
Right.
Right. We're, we're talking about one to zero. So level of service, it's gonna be mostly probably a response time. Um, but, you know, I think if you guys want to have a discussion about what the police are doing with their time daily, that's almost kind of a different discussion. So I do think we should take it kind of a step at a time and and focus on the financial side.
Right.
Um,
Except the financial side has to include efficiency.
Yes, but what I'm saying, Julia is, you know, you have one person, that one person could could maybe spend more time in a certain neighborhood, but we're still paying for that person. So financially, the costs are the same.
Right.
It's not like we can go to half a person.
No, no, and I understand that. I'm just certain.
And then, you know, county does play CalPERS and CalPERS is a function of salary and their salaries are higher, so their CalPERS is higher. You know, again, that
Right.
That's so I think what you really would, and I think we also want to send the message, if we are, I think we have a great police force.
I do too.
And if we're, and if we're, if we are paying less, we don't want to send the message that we're not, not happy with that.
Exactly.
So.
So I think that first step becomes really important to try to figure out where we are, kind of.
I think it's more of a fact finding type of exercise.
Yeah.
And
Because if we discover, for instance, that, hey, money wise, we're, we're good, we're equal to or better than. Then if we want to have a discussion, you know, recognizing that this thing is getting larger every year, if we want to shift the committee's charter to analyzing really the needs and our willingness to do with less, that is a different discussion that could come later. Absolutely, it could. If we need, you know, if there's just no way forward to continue with this spend on an annual basis, we need to be willing to consider what are the risks of doing with less? And I know, Tom, you know, you, I hear you when you say, well, you're really talking about level of service at that point. Yes, unless, you know, yeah, I mean, if you're gonna, you know, cut out a shift or this or that, all of that ends up being a level of service deficit at that point. But there's a lot of ways to go after that if and when we think any of that makes any sense. All right. Well, so we would just take it a step at a time and come back and bring you all the information as we discover it. I wish that there was a, I think, some kind of a a plug in, a, a, you know, other people have studied and worked through this issue. I'm going to see what we can do about finding out, how do they do that? And has somebody got a
Right.
A solution we can borrow? So we don't have to invent this.
We're not the only city that faces this difficulty.
Yeah. Yeah.
And to find out the direction of the community, because if that is the imperative that we want this, then people, when they say, well, why are the roads so shabbier? You know, because this is the choice we're making.
Exactly.
There's always trade offs and that's a good point.
Yeah.
And I just want to go on the record that I think we have a, a great police department and which was exhibited here tonight.
Right.
There that they were all here to see one of their officers and, and meet, you know, be here when we met, met the new officer. They're, they're a good crew.
Absolutely. And some of this work could make things better for them. You know, if we find a way to improve the efficiency of the department, centralized services, I don't know what kind of hybrid models there are, then we could potentially be able to pay them more, you know?
That's a good, good point.
May come to that, but it's a huge part of our budget. It goes up every year and we owe it to our residents to really take a look.
I just don't want anybody to misinterpret what the goal is.
Good point.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, I would like to go on record of that as well, and they do a great job. And one of the amazing things about this town is it's so safe. So it'd be interesting to find out other like sized towns, what they're finding with enforcement.
Yeah.
Are there any other parts of the budget you guys have thoughts on?
I have a, I still have a question about the unfunded, Tom, and I know it's, it's complicated, but back to Julia's question about, and you're using the 10% because that's what they provided. Well, if what they are providing us actually is consistent and real, it wouldn't be going up like this, would it?
I mean, 10% is a lot year to year.
I know.
Compounded.
Yeah. But so what, Mason clarified something for me. So the next three years or so are pretty actual, that that's what CalPERS sends us. Beyond the three years is where their investment return
I see.
Can make it change.
Okay.
So we're pretty accurate for the next three years.
This with, yeah, this cost here, the 354, 385, 407, those are pretty accurate.
Would, go back to that chart, CalPERS annual return data. So we're just talking about, oh, well, that we can count on it being accurate. Look at that thing. It bounces all over the place.
Yeah.
Just be aware that it, it could be a totally, it could totally blow up or it could be way more than you expect.
I mean, yeah, but just again, remember there, this is a long term
Big picture.
Average.
Right.
They, they do aggress, they invest aggressively. I mean, they, they do have returns that are higher than the average investor. But again, I think they've had too high of an assumption and, you know, every couple of years, so they lowered it to 6.8. I don't remember. I think they're going to lower it to 6.5 in a year or two. So they're, they're lowering their assumption of what they can do, which will be good. I mean, it'll be more accurate, more realistic.
But the problem is, no matter what their return is, we're still obligated to pay the defined benefits that, that, that aren't going to come down or be adjusted according to revenue.
Yeah. So, you know, but again, as the classic people retire, move on, the, the curve will come down and it's just kind of getting through the peak.
Right.
I guess one other thought just kind of scurries through my mind, and I'm not suggesting we do this. Let me say that again. I'm not suggesting we do this. But in private business, there are times when, based on the financial situation, the word goes out and nobody's getting a raise.
Yeah.
And I don't know how that could, would, should work in a municipality. My experience isn't in this kind of world. It's in the private sector. And I'm, and again, I'm not suggesting it's time to do that, but I'd like some education on that, I guess. I'd like to learn a little bit more about that. Yeah, I mean, what
You know, and when you bring that up, in 2008, city employees were, their hours were cut back. They all really took a helped a lot, to be fair, and to that point. I think they were working four days a week and several employees were laid off due to the economic situation. So a lot of the things that happened in the, happened in the private sector happened here, here too.
Yeah.
During that time.
Yeah.
But, and that was my point about being, you gotta react quickly because in other years before that, the reaction was slower.
Yeah.
And that's where that $3 million highway relinquishment fee, a lot of that was used to
Yeah.
To cover those costs and, and it haunts you today.
Well, and it's happening right now in the public sector and schools.
Right, exactly.
Here.
Right. And Jim, I don't know if you know this or not, or if any of you know it, but that $3 million, the relinquishment fees from Caltrans, because they were given to Sutter Creek, you know, that's a asterisk criteria for ACTC evaluating projects for in the city. When they see that, well, you know, like Amador City had some money and they were asking for some money last year and they didn't get it because they also received relinquishment fees. So it's a challenge that we live with still today. And again, I, Tom, I'm not suggesting, you know, it's, it's time to do all that, but I just wanted to open that discussion here and you know, I don't know. It's, it's not bad. I mean, we're, we're hanging in there. This, this isn't, you know, the worst story I've ever been told here.
I don't want it again.
Financial.
There are some positives in here.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So I think I would just reiterate what Jim was just saying.
But there are storm clouds.
There are storm clouds, definitely. And some we haven't even talked about tonight, and that's probably fine.
And it's also, you know, I agree, we don't have to get much further tonight, and I have no idea how to measure it. But Sutter Creek's, at least the tourism, you know, the sales tax and visitations kind of react oppositely to some of the rest of the state. You know, when we had, we had a huge boom right after COVID, partially because things were open when they shouldn't have been and you couldn't go anywhere else. But, you know, it's almost a false, and you, you can still afford to come here for the day when you can't afford, you know, a lot of other
Kind of like a stay, like a staycation.
Yeah, so there's
Well, it's although the COVID thing though, because I saw a lot of those customers come through here was very clearly because there was nowhere else to go. Like, they wanted to go to Europe, but they were here.
Yeah.
But I agree, there will be some of that shorter distance travel, possibly from
Come to Sutter Creek instead of Disneyland.
But that's a good argument though, to maintain your level of promotion if you can.
Yeah. Looks like a good first step, Tom.
We should keep moving. We've got a couple more items.
All right. Weed abatement ordinance.
So this item is back before you. We did a workshop previously. I took notes and have done my best to respond to your concerns. I've looked at the Ione ordinance. I've looked at the Jackson ordinance. As you all know, this was patterned after in Angel's Camp ordinance that I drafted when I was the city attorney there several years ago. I feel like I've covered all of your concerns. I think we've outlined the procedures. We've, we've created the authority that we need, we, but, but I'm certainly happy to respond or to make any changes. So I guess that's not much of a introduction, but I'm, I'm happy to either defend what I've done or if you need me to continue to do things or add things or clarify things, I'm happy to take some homework back with me and get it right so that it's what you're looking for.
I had one quick question before we get started. I thought, I think it looks great. But in terms of, I know I talked to, and Tom has talked to Dominic and other cities. I know in a conversation with Mackie, he shared with us kind of the growing pains of when they started doing this and how it went over the first five years or whatever it was, which is all expected. But Derek, if we go ahead and adopt this and get started as we learn from this process, maybe before next spring, if we want to modify it somewhat, how hard is it to do that?
Very easy.
So we could get rolling and then learn a little bit and maybe make some changes?
I would greatly encourage that. We should move this forward. We could do some troubleshooting if we need to make amendments. I think we might even, if, if we encounter something just urgent and we're in the middle of fire season, we could probably do this as an urgency item. But we could also go through a full season, learn our lessons and come back with changes.
I think the ordinance is fairly flexible though. A lot of, I think what you guys are concerned about is on the operational side. I did have a really good conversation with Dominic. I think I tried to indicate in the staff report that it will, will probably be complaint driven. It'll probably be things that, that Dominic agrees need to be taken care of. So even though, you know, this just gives us the framework to create the operations within. So I think as long as the framework is flexible enough, we may not need to change the ordinance. We can still tweak.
Everybody can go through and make their comments, but that, I, I feel like we should go forward with this, get, get started and learn from the process.
I had a question with regard to the introduction versus the actual like text of the ordinance. It says here, after no ladder fuels from the ground to tree limbs, it says proper tree spacing will be examined in line with the fire district, but I don't know if I'm missing it, but I don't see that in the text of the ordinance.
That, that's what I'm trying to say is, it's not. So there's operational procedure.
Okay.
And there was that attachment about kind of what, what, there's kind of what the fire district encourages people to do and what required.
So
So the ordinance says weeds and kind of taking care of things within four inches. Dominic talks about ladder fuels up to tree branches. And again, if there's a bunch of weeds that go up to the tree, that's going to violate the ordinance, so. But we don't have to have all that detail on the ordinance.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I had just one suggestion. I mean, I really liked the way it's laid out. Thank you for the time you put into that. Would there be a way, and this is just maybe trying to free up the designee or for whoever the enforcement head is, is, could there be a proof that a landowner who was cited to make the abatement? Could they, rather than having somebody come out, if it gets really busy, would there be a way for that landowner, property owner to provide, you know, photography proof? Like, okay, I did it.
Yes.
Just as a way to try, I'm trying to find a way just to minimize the
We would absolutely, that, that, that would be the purpose of giving the notice is to try to compel them to go do it themselves.
Yes.
And even if we perfect the notice and uphold the violation, we still have to go get an abatement warrant to go onto the property. And so if the landowner voluntarily abates and removes the nuisance, then we have nothing to abate. And so we can then take steps. We, that is a principle in code enforcement. At every step of the way, you're looking for voluntary compliance, even after the violation. Now, if you have some costs sunk into it, when you get to that point, you can deal with that. But, you know, that, that is a, a good principle. And frankly, we don't have a burden, you know, we don't have a big code enforcement department here. So if we get voluntary compliance at the end of the process, we will be very happy with that.
And, and getting to that voluntary compliance, I was going back in my notes in the last meeting and couldn't find, maybe, maybe I just missed it, discussion of a fee that, I think there was a $500 fee versus an administrative cost and actual cost. Or if the city, if there isn't the voluntary abatement and the city has to go in through the process and do the abatement.
Correct. Yeah, there's a fine.
There
And then we recover the cost.
According to this, it's the cost plus a 10% fee overhead.
Yeah, so there's two routes we can go and we can do both. One is the abatement, in which case we will recover our costs and we'll record our costs, which can include even my costs and others. And then that becomes part of the abatement lien that gets reported. There is a recent California court case, I'm getting really into the weeds here, proverbially. But that says that using the tax roll to recover citation costs is not appropriate. So I had to make an adjustment to this ordinance. We can cite people in which case, and, and we have to follow the citation procedure statute, which is 100, 250, 500. So I've made that correction, but we can recover as a lien our enforcement costs. It's getting a little wonky, but, but I've, 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 I've tried to make sure we, there are some government codes, statutory authorities that we have to account for, and I've done my best to do that here.
That's, that's clear. I would just recommend where it says the nuisance abatement service administrative overhead fee shall initially be set at 10% of the total cost. I'd like to see it 20%. Because I can see the, the overhead on this by the time we have people, you know, staff go out and do the inspection, do all that. I, I would like, I think 10% is soft, but that's just my opinion.
If, if as a motion, yeah, you, I mean, that's an easy change we can make as part of the introduction. If that's the pleasure of the council, if you choose to introduce this tonight.
This is also a good one that we can track and get some data and change to over time.
I'm, I'm okay with the 10%, but as I'm one person.
I will say 10% has been, in my experience, the common number that's used in these types of various coding. It is, it is pretty standard. Yeah, I think the concern is when government is taking, you know, 20% of the cost, there's a perception issue that we're being inefficient and, you know.
No, I think it's, I go along with Claire, what you were talking about, you know, get it, let's get it running. Let's, let's get it out there and learn and thanks for the good work and what do we do to move it forward? Let's, let's get it out there and learn and thanks for the good work and what do we do to move it forward?
Motion.
I have some questions though. It's called the the abatement of weeds and rubbish, but then it also deals with nuisance. And I'm just wondering if if it's kind of a misnomer to call it the abatement of weeds and rubbish. Maybe.
We have, we have other, so sorry.
Help me out there.
We have other code sections that define nuisances. So the, again, being very wonky, getting in the weeds, um, when you declare something a nuisance, you have statutory authority to abate it or to cite it. And so having language that takes the subject, which is weeds and rubbish, but uses the term nuisance is actually helpful to us. But elsewhere in our code, we have sections that define other nuisances, like, you know.
And that, yeah, that was my next question.
Junk and other things.
Cause on, on the first, uh, page, on page 63 of our packet, uh, at the bottom, number four, where it's concerning nuisance, uh, it mentions vehicles. And then we have, uh, 10.34.10 declaration of nuisance. And also definitions of, one definition that's in there is collector means the owner of one or more vehicles who collects, purchases, acquires, trades or disposes of such vehicles, i- i- it was specific about vehicles. So my question is, the, when it says vehicles in this ordinance, do all the requirements or ordinance that already exists apply first?
No, this, so, go ahead. I'm sorry, cutting off.
So my question is, okay, so in this ordinance, we can declare a vehicle a nuisance. But there's sort of exceptions to that in another ordinance, which takes precedence.
So when we go after weeds and rubbish, we will be following this chapter, which is chapter 10.40 of our code. And we will be focusing exclusively on this chapter. So we would not go switching back and forth between chapters. You know, 1034. So if you, if you just put in the word nuisance in our code, it pops up numerous sections. The word nuisance appears throughout many codes. I, I'm looking at chapter 14.908, as you point out, Jim, chapter 10.34, uh, section, uh, chapter 9.22. I mean, I, I've got, you know, the, our, our official code publication. And I've, you know, I mean, the word pops up in several of our, nearly all of our titles have the word. So again, the, the declaration of a nuisance is a legal thing that says if we declare it a nuisance, that means we're declaring it contrary to our code, contrary to law, contrary to civil law. And we may use the powers that the government code gives us to correct the nuisance, either through abatement or citation. So you'll actually see in any municipal code, numerous declarations of nuisances. So this is just one form of nuisance, if that makes any sense. Junkyard is another form of nuisance and would be abated under a different chapter of our code.
Right.
Um, this is a nuisance that would be abated by this chapter of our code.
Okay, so I guess my question is, so if someone has a vehicle on their property and you apply this, if the new, this new ordinance that we're considering, does that property owner get the same considerations that are given to a vehicle described in another ordinance?
We, we would follow, uh, I think you're referring to chapter 10.34, correct?
Yes.
So what we would do is if we were abating, um, you know, an abandoned vehicle, cause that's a whole separate process. We would follow the processes in chapter 10. And I, you all don't have this. I'm looking at chapter 10.34 on my, on my screen. But I mean, it's a pretty exhaustive, um, it's a pretty exhaustive statute. And I believe there's a separate statute that governs abandonment or, or abatement of, of abandoned vehicles. And that might actually have some authority in the California Vehicle Code. So if we encounter, if our code of course, if our code enforcement goes out to, you know, on the same day, a vehicle site, they would follow that process and start the process under chapter 10.34. And then if they see, you know, all these weeds on this property that have to like, that are, you know, really tall, they would follow this new chapter. Yeah, yeah.
So just so I'm clear, like this is in, this is in the new ordinance that says abandoned, discarded or unused objects, including furniture, stoves, vehicles.
I, I read that is, those are in there, cause they're fire hazards. So if the fire department's going around.
This isn't a fire, this is a nuisance. So if somebody's hoarding a bunch of stuff, this ordinance would apply.
Yeah, you'd have different, I mean, so I, I see the point. I mean, you, you would have different authorities. It really, you'd have, it's kind of like you'd have a toolbox. And you'd be, this would be a little bit of a different tool, um, that you could, that you could apply.
But if the fire department goes out and, and looks at a place that's overgrown and it's also got a big pile of trash in the middle of all the overgrown weeds, then that this should, you know, that should be cleaned up.
I was also thinking though, separate from any fire issue, if somebody in town like just hoarded a bunch of stuff on their property, this, um, rubbish abatement ordinance could be used. It could be just, you know, rubbish.
Well, sure. I, I'm just, here's the scenario that I, I'm thinking happen. Okay, so, uh, someone has a vehicle on their property and they said, we've got to get rid of that. It's a fire hazard. But then when you go, if you go to 10.34.10, 010, it says if you're a collector, you can, you can have a car on your property. So which one applies? That's, that's, and is there discretion about that?
I think it would, yeah, I think, well, abandoned or discarded is different than collecting, I would think.
Well, beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
Well, then, and we recall that they would get a, you know, under either ordinance, they'd get a notice.
Right.
And, um, so, I mean, but, but I mean, we could take the word vehicle out of 10.40. I mean, cause I, I think as I, I look at this.
Covered somewhere.
You know, it's covered somewhere else. And I mean, as a practical matter, I don't know.
Trying to avoid confusion. So if, if there's an abandoned vehicle right now, you won't even need this ordinance because we, it's covered under 10.34.10.
Does this give us more enforcement capability?
I, I look at it as abandoned, discarded or unused objects or equipment of any type, so I, I don't know. I.
I mean, we haven't necessarily.
I'm agnostic. If, yeah, I mean, I would probably use 10.34 if we really wanted to deal with truly abandoned vehicles. Um, if we had like vehicle parts.
Yeah, it's an assortment of things.
If we had like a, I don't know any, I don't know anything about vehicle parts, but carburetor, I don't know. Do they make carburetors anymore? Attires like.
Let me take you across the street.
Yeah. If we had like, you know, a parts or something that I would use this section, and I think that
Right.
Objects of any type, including vehicles, that it would pick that up. So I, again, I, I think, you know, you, you want to give flexibility to enforcement, but, but keep in mind that all enforcement has to follow due process. That's an essential element of, of the law generally, but is especially an element that is the undercurrent of code enforcement, which is we have to give notice, we have to give a hearing right. We have to be very specific in our notice. We can't, you know, we have to tell people exactly what they are violating, how they are violating it and what they can do to correct it. So i- any route we go down is going to give due process and compel us to be very clear about what we're doing and why we're doing it. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just don't want to see one ordinance be used in a, in a situation that abuses the other ones that follow what I'm trying to say.
Sure. And I don't, I mean.
Oh, you got to get rid of that vehicle because it says this ordinance. Well, maybe that person doesn't know. In another ordinance, it says, if I'm a collector and I do can, can verify that, it's not an abandoned vehicle.
I mean, I I, I think the notice that we would give them would, would deal with that.
Okay, that's, I want that.
Yeah.
Assurance.
Well, I, I think it's nice to have all of the words in there because the goal of this is to start a conversation with these folks, not to, uh, what's it called when we do it for them? Abate them, uh, uh.
Do the abatement, correct?
Yeah, so when we start a conversation, whether if, if they start a conversation with the fire department, then we ought to be able to talk to them about, you know, the whole property, you know? And if we're looking for solutions for them and with them, then, you know, we can talk about their weeds and their junk pile.
I think being inclusive is better than trying to leave something out.
I, yeah, I wasn't actually suggesting that it be stricken, just that it's recognized that it's covered in other parts of our civic, our municipal code.
Right. It is a good point.
But are refrigerators covered in other parts of our municipal code?
No, they're not.
Phasers?
I specifically, I only highlighted vehicles.
I, I have a question with regard to section nine, item C, with regard to the Amador City and Sutter, Sutter Creek wildfire preparedness self-inspection sheet. Is that actually enforceable or is that more of a suggestion from the fire chief of how land should be cleared? Cause it gets real specific and I wouldn't want to be voting on something that says like, like the tree spacing and if that's something that is then going to be enforceable, because it seems a little bit. I mean, I get, I mean, I even said to my neighbor the other day, is it gonna be the point that we can't even have trees on our property with regard to insurance? But, um.
You're talking about the exhibit?
I'm talking, uh, yeah, is that what it's called? The, the self-inspection sheet.
Yeah, that, that's what the fire district uses. That's what I was trying to say earlier. That's, that's not in the ordinance.
Okay.
You, you know, the ordinance, I think is general enough that, um, if somebody had a ton of trees right next to their house, you know, they would probably get cited. Uh, but we're not like enforcing that checklist as
Right.
Those are more like recommendations.
Well, and this checklist, Susan, isn't, uh, I don't think it's their code. It's their, uh, community outreach and education that they do for.
Yeah, I get that. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't part of our ordinance since it.
Some of those, some of those things, though, they do enforce and some are recommended.
Some of the, yeah, but I think this, this document itself, it's like on their website, you know, do you want to clean up your home? This is a good guideline. Any other conversation?
I move that we accept the ordinance as presented, um, for the, uh, regarding the abatement of weeds and rubbish.
I'd second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So this comes back in thirty days?
Uh, no, it comes back in our next meeting.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
So I'm sorry, was there somebody opposed?
Yeah, so this will come back in the next meeting for a second reading.
And we vote on it again in the next meeting.
Yes.
And we read the whole thing verbatim, right? Front and back.
I'm gonna do that.
You're gonna do that?
Yes.
It's kind of like a filibuster?
If we're in a city hall.
In a hat.
Bring, bring beverage of your choice.
Add a pair of weed cutters.
Can we get snacks?
It should go, I like.
Okay, item 10, council member reports. Anybody?
Um, just a reminder, um, Wednesday, I'm going, there's the hazard plan, uh, hazard risk plan, um, at the county office, um, from one to four. And Accra actually rescheduled its meeting, um, to be able to allow the board members to attend. So I think that's really good for.
Is there an update on when the, um, the board supervisors will consider the Accra money for Bryson Park bathroom? The scheduling of that?
It was, it was approved as part of the project, but I don't know where.
Doesn't it have to go to the board supervisors?
Yeah, it didn't go at the last meeting. I don't know when it's gonna be agendized.
I did have a couple of people reach out to me and they would be very happy to go to that meeting, residents to go to that meeting in support of it. So if, if anybody gets a head up, heads up on when it is, we can share that.
The, um, board of supervisors, they gender out, and I'll check with our supervisor, um, Logan Carnell.
Anybody else?
I have a quick one, uh, both have to do with, there are two quick ones. They both have to do with ACTC. Just following up, we've been having discussion over the last few months about the ACTC's, um, 1.5 million dollar claim for RTMF fund reimbursement on the Bowers, uh, road alignment and all that business. I believe that at this point, we're, we are waiting for the, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think we're waiting for the developer to finish a complete application. At that time, we'll take it under consideration. And when we decide what kind of conditions to, you know, associate with that project, we'll include whatever we feel is appropriate for any kind of reimbursement back to those ACT funds. So we're not going to continue trying to negotiate it and get it solved before the fact. We're going into regular process, so to speak. The second part of the ACTC thing was that next month's, uh, meeting, I won't be here, Julia, so that's my backup. If you're willing to go, it'd be the, it's, it's the first Thursday in May, which I think is the second, or maybe even the first of May.
The first Thursday?
Yes.
Anybody else?
No.
Okay.
And if there's anything substantial, Julie, I'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
City attorneys report.
Nothing.
Future agenda items. Nope, okay.
I, I have one that is not super specific, but with thinking about, is it Gail that spoke about Gold Rush today, Claire? Um, Gail's comment and what we're looking at, I, I think that it would be um, wise to have some sort of conversation with regard to our philosophy of growth. And even thinking, Claire, about our comments being so different with, as is Sutter Creek walkable. To me, it is walkable because I can walk downtown. To you, it's not walkable because your neighborhood is separated by the road and it's way more dangerous. And whether or not those things, well, to me, it's really important. Whether or not mixed use is important. We've had 20 years since the general plan was looked, or specific plan was looked at for Gold Rush. And we've seen all the growth in Folsom and El Dorado Hills. And to, to me, that is something that is not applicable here. I, I think that it would be a really, I think it could wreck this community. And, um, also Claire, something that you said that struck me was the hills here are open and if there's some way that we could protect so that it always has this rural feeling. Cause I don't, I, I've always thought since I moved here that there will be a lot of development pressure on this region. And people say, oh, well, it's so far, but it's really not. And we're just seeing so much of America get built over. I would love to have a conversation with us and the community on what we want for here before we just look at zoning and specifics and not, you know, think of really the next hundred years. And I'd love to get feedback from, and then, and then also it might help, cause I do, I am, I do think that development would be positive if we do it correctly and to get the community involved and not have it come to a fight again as Gold Rush was, but maybe like a real positive.
I think that's kind of what we just tried to do when we had the joint session with the council and the planning commission.
Yeah, but I, I think more specific just on growth and development and zoning and land use and, um, what's the word? Preservation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to ideas. Maybe you and I can talk about what that would look like, because I think we did try to do it. And if, if you have some ideas on another way to approach it.
But I didn't. Don't forget, we were, that was a discussion about, uh, an area, an annexed area that, that zoned for residential. We weren't talking about reinventing the wheel there in that particular.
We also had the joint session with the planning commission, which I was hoping would be some of this discussion, but maybe we didn't have enough of it.
Yeah, I didn't, I mean, I'll look back at the minutes, but it just, uh, cause I think the one thing and not, I don't have my mind made up about anything with regard to this development. But we are taking out a specific plan that did have mixed use and pulling out only the residential zoning part of it. So we're not getting what people, what we thought we were getting. And, and it might be better, there might, there are better aspects to it, I would think too, because it's
So again, to be clear, the, the mixed use sections are still part of the plan. And when that area got developed, it would have to be commercial and.
Right, but. Right. But we're picking them out into phases.
Yeah, they can't just build the whole thing at once. But, yeah.
This is our future agenda item. So we need to.
Yeah, sorry.
And we're getting into policy here. So if there's a specific, you know, request that you want staff to bring back, we can do that.
Land use and zoning and direction. And, and maybe we could do it ad hoc, like in the next six months or so. Vision would be the overreaching title.
Susan, I, I just, I appreciate the, the spirit of what you're talking about because it's, it, it's kind of what I was thinking about also before, just trying to get a sense of, well, what do people want and what don't they want? Because that's our job is to represent the community. So I would look forward to. And I was hoping also that the planning, uh, department thing would have been more fruitful in that way. And I understand why it wasn't, and we, we did the best we could. But we didn't really get to that part of the discussion. And I'm not sure how to do that.
There was some correspondence in my, um, y'all got something in your box?
Oh, I didn't notice anything today.
Okay.
Today?
No, um, last week, maybe. Well, we could follow up and address it next time, I suppose.
Anything urgent?
Okay. Then we're adjourned.
Nope.
We're going to take a recess and then go into a closed session.
We're going to go to closed session.
Oh.